I call this regular meeting to debate the city council board Monday, October third, twenty twenty-three, six o'clock P M. Can we get a roll call, please?
Megan.
Here.
Dan Nielsen.
Here.
Jason Sampson.
Here.
Sky.
Here.
Danny Earth.
Here.
First item was approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second, Danny and Steve. You can go to the county council with though. It is approved. Fix this consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second, Andy and Brian. You know, this county council with though. It is approved. Next is the public forum, which is time to decide the comments from the public on topics of city business other than those of the municipal. You know, if you keep your comments at five minutes or what, we do have one request from the cloud, so I'm going to have you go to the podium and state your name and address for the record and address the council.
Good evening. My name's Missina. I live at thirteen twenty-eight South, we have a new. I'm here tonight to address the speed limit on South. The current speed limit on the from the intersection nineteen street to one hundred million is thirty-five miles an hour and then drops down to twenty-five miles an hour. And is the area is considered residential zone. Um, since the former super eight was a motel, they considered that a business district. But now that it's been revamped to an apartment building, it's now would be considered residential zone. So I would like to propose to drop the speed limit from the whole nineteen streets or excuse me, the whole South Street down to twenty-five miles an hour. That would be my. And I just want to say thank you to Dan because he was, I appreciate all this help and he responded right away and I just want to thank the council tonight for hearing me. Do you have any questions?
Can you? Can you present it?
Do you see that there is thirty-five, there is still going thirty-five in front of you? How is that?
They are. Like there is a lot more children, that building, that part of the building across from me, they have no yard except for the front yard, so a lot of children play out in the front yard. And you know, I don't want to place blame on anybody, but I know suburbio, those trucks go by there so fast and there is no way they can stop. To walk around the cross. They, it would be an accident or be fatal. You have any questions?
If I could possibly add to that. They've started developing, because in the past they had that wide open field kind of islandous town rules for kids who go play. They're starting to develop that now, that area is starting to go away, so we're beginning with kids playing in the mountains, they're showing up and using these townhomes. I have to listen one myself.
Thank you very much.
Is there something like public safety to do or are there any questions on that?
Speed trailer, any kind of data? Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
I was just curious to add data that is ongoing, you know, keeping with data that we need.
I'm here, you want the public safety to enter and bring back recommendations? For anyone else here to speak in the public forum? In the scene that you will close public forum, moving to old business A, repair number eighteen, for waste water treatment facility, equipment base through from Boomerang Incorporated, United Four hundred thirty thousand five hundred fifty-seven dollars. Move to approve. Second, Dave. None has to pay vote. It's approved. Fix this to be discussion appropriate, follow the regarding rental pass and use refuse point field power.
Good evening, everyone. How you doing, Dan?
We're good.
Good to hear.
You looking for help here?
Kind of carefully lining the drug, I'm seeing no one. This is super awesome.
Um, first of all, I'd like to thank you for, yeah, tuning in, come back this evening and this discussion was, um, welcome back to you and what was discussed and hopefully some alterations that were made from the workshop regarding the use of field house, so. Um, I think we can wrap it, we tried to, um, say, and we came up with that F A Q and was that? Was that, was that helpful? I hope. Okay, it's very helpful. Okay, and then, um, Brian, I think we addressed some of your concerns as well with, um, some of the past things, they have some of that. Reporting on there and, um, you know, basically, I think what we did is took all the programming out of any packs and we just have a little basic user, user feed. Um, I think there's might still be some misunderstanding of what the move and play path is, if anything, right for that, that's how we. Nice for that. Um, but moving play pass, I think one people rather than around it and when you utilize, I think so, I'll really very much enjoy that. Um, you know, the youth basic house, that is what it is. On the adult. And three young adults where you can go anywhere for whatever offering, just to go. Twenty dollars for the year. Um, and you know, that's specifically about. And, uh, I think. Basically, what we did is we brought off the bad incisions and made that sound. And, um, that's what would give individuals into those bad incisions. Um, honestly, it. It includes the new basic, so if you're going to use a bad incage more than bulk. Here, um, that will be a really good. That's where we left that. I think we added some, you know, important information, the F A Qs. And I really think that from a starting point, we, we have a good start with this. Um, we took a few of our work on Monday of last week and we have lots of stuff on going with. Um, and, you know, they are in favor of moving forward with this. We need them proposed here, right? So I don't know if anyone has any specific questions they'd like asked. Or refer to the comments.
I think so, a couple of comments, just based on the, 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 um, the, 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 the. Um, people are going to think we're confused, why don't we have a standard? Maybe, maybe another question is an answer. If you're a family, here's how you can, you know, here's the, here's something you would ask, maybe an adult, maybe a teenager. And the same with seniors, once you know any two guys. That don't understand, if you're a senior, here's what, you know, one of the kids in their career, we clean, right, for both.
Right.
And, um, we're going to be a senior, I think. I don't know, because they are, you know, they're more senior. Maybe that's another way, we're just going to continue to operate, sure, more of a, how to do it.
Roger question, uh, and thanks for all the listening, but we spent a lot of time on this.
Lovely.
Yeah, I'm sure, so I appreciate it. I think you've addressed a lot of the concerns. What I hear is that, um, you know, there's people that want to sign up for the move and play pass and they just want to come along.
Yeah.
Um, in the wintertime, but they're concerned that, that, that facility access is lifted at eight, five P M. That that doesn't give them time to come and do that after work. And I know you said the facility will likely be open, you know, if there's activities going on, I think they can also come in and use it at that time, maybe. Um, but that is a concern I heard, yeah, these free hours are great, but can't make.
So I think there's a real misconception on actually how we program to give for our community, I think there's a really a large misconception of that. Um, we pretty much have programs going on, on every night of the week with the exception of Wednesdays, Sundays, Wednesdays, Fridays, Saturdays. Um, and I think that's going to change dramatically with the addition of the Hill House to our programming, so there are going to be additional opportunities for them to. Like we have, we don't even have any adult programming at the current home anymore. So I think that people need to understand that we are, we do this going on more often than not. Um, we're just going to use winter as, you know, we basically allow us to winter, um, because that's what we're going into. But this is going on on Mondays, Tuesdays and, um, especially when we're going on Monday or just on Thursday. We might add the adult programming going on in the evenings. Um, with that being said, um, we'll. So those are just programming helpers, right? Um, we'll probably add an additional, like, open gym, open rec times as well. Um, now, those wouldn't, some of those we might have special for, and include the move and play, we haven't really got far yet because we need a programming facility around where our. Activities are offering them, but there's going to be opportunities and, um, even, even without, and then we are going to have some opportunities to. Whereas if we have proper staffing, which I think we need to have, we need to come to staff later in order to. Have the things that might be like fourteen years old and about to come in, you know, without their parents, if that's what they're going to want to do, we understand that. We're, we're rec people, but. We also have to understand that it can't be a free for all either, which is very important. Um, if it was a free for all, um, we couldn't staff that and we would need a person in every. The area and, and we just can't, um, frequently do that, so there's going to be time to offer, I think people need to be patient. And we need to get things established and stuff, what we're going to have, and then we can look at adding some of these things and. There will be established times that'll, that'll be having developed and we'll be able to accommodate some of those issues and the working or. Um. At the end of the day, it's always been, um, a program basis, so that is why we put the time in straight time. We do not depend on having the facility opening on. On July thirteenth, maybe the day from sixth and maybe, you know, other stuff makes sense because most people are going to want to be able. Whether there's a program going on or something going on, we don't need to open any of these. So I hope it's going to be.
Yeah, I think so. We just need to get the word out, kind of stay tuned, there will, there will be other times you can come along as well, and I'm sure we'll communicate those as they recover.
Correct, like I said, we have programs. I mean, we have, we have programs going on tonight, I've got, you know, what do you really know about this, people stream up for the actual program, so we have. Three hours of programming going on tonight, we may place in the Hill House in which people may come in, you need to realize. It's not ready yet, there are warnings. That's where we're at this evening, and when we're at the Hill House, that is when, when we have a week.
I don't know if Steve was able to see the examples that don't do that, you got a lot of times, I think you were freedom.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that was a good visual, I think, for us too, for us, and something like that might be helpful for people that, that are out there, and I look to see if I kept mine here, but.
Yes.
Just giving an example of what a top program might look like, there's a lot of. Open time on here, it's pretty busy, you guys weren't got out for it.
Still getting.
Going on that most ninety of ours on Saturday.
So maybe the answer.
Yeah.
About, there's totally going. Say it yourself, you know, regularly, we, we.
So I think a lot of people are, are operating off of assumptions, you know, and I think that that's, that's something that we need to get over that. And for people to actually see what we're putting together and be able to visualize it on a calendar, I think that that is key for, for everyone to be able to. Understand what our hours and classes are going to look like, what areas of the facility will be open, which ones will be being used. Um, and I think that it's important, let us, A, get into the facility, um, I think that's, that's key, and I think that where we're starting and. What we're in, what we're currently putting together is, it's going to be good, and it's just take time to roll out. Um, it's called being doing great right now and just off where everything is working equal, that will hold. But once again, we don't even really know where the building is. Yeah.
I'm going to go three box and one. Brian, Dan, for the discussion.
I work, yeah, absolutely.
You probably wanted to pull your hair out for a while, so thanks for working so hard on it. Danny. You know, you just said, you have to vote. That is approved. Fix this to new business A, regulation number nineteen, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Regulation approved pre-construction room for primary growth projects with Iowa apartment.
This is for water man relocation on five hundred eighty. For the, uh, building.
Move to approve.
Sorry.
You need to. The second. None has to be voted. It is approved. Fix this to be regulation twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. Regulation approved to decorate, you know, submit some property to horizontal property regime for fourteen thirty-six to wet and having. Move to approve. Thank you, Dave.
He was, I have to have.
Yeah, um, I, I did respond, I asked if you were able to see that, but basically, um, this is requesting the city to. Take action on this because it's Iowa, I don't know if it's four ninety-nine, B one that requires us to take out. Because this is preventing to, um, clearly a government worker property, so paid in the way. Uh, in regards to the property taxes that cannot affect any, any property taxes in the area because it's only affecting that, that property.
How is it if it's? If it's eventually sold, it's gonna be in the middle of the. How is? How is the property tax for that structure? Is it done?
And we, yeah, mine would be done as a similar to the apartment.
It's not their own.
Yeah.
Right, um.
Yeah.
Well, we're talking that, but I just, so is it possible for someone to also, such thing like, like, trying to figure out this today? Um, five one four, there's. We have a purchase for.
Yeah. Yeah, they, they would allow ten thousand Ks, same six, six weeds in there, minimum of four percent. Other than they would basically give four, um, four of the six. Actually, that property.
But this is, but this is not like anything else that we can't account for.
No, it would not be, I mean, I think the only other age away is that we have in town would be Indian, uh, Indian range, um, that would be, each one would be separate, so, but really, I think the.
The name.
Yeah, it's possible, it's could be, um, so, yeah, so this would be.
But, but this is meaningful, I, I'm just working.
It is, right, yeah. And I, I haven't had any experience with this in the other, um, any other properties or anything that's about here.
So what's the? Why, why would some students, because it's a pretty much. Honey and lady or?
I think it just provides someone to be able to have ownership in, in there rather than leasing or renting for a long period of time, so. Long term, it probably, it's, they don't, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out why, why this property, why now? What? What would do, you know, to enhance somebody's experience here? Yeah, that is. Um.
Yeah, I think when we, when Karen and I first got it, we were kind of confused a little bit as well, so we automatically sent the number to Andrew, which he didn't have to be in the pen, sorry.
We covered all of. Like I think this is, I heard this over the.
Well, that's not really, that's not really what council can determine, I don't know.
The, the big question about why this property, why now?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know the answer to that, I think Jordan's got a, I think he's got a good grasp on why they would potentially want to do it, I don't know what the motivation would be for the owners of property. Um, other than just to provide a different view of living for folks, so.
It just, it just, yeah, it just feels like a tool.
But it's what they've done with their other properties as well. And it's what they've done with their other properties as well, they have.
Totally.
Number three and five, couple in her bill.
And we, we may want to say this again with another profit in the community, uh, but I, I don't believe that they are willing to sell all of every. Every suite, they want to use the loan and lease them out, so we may need some time in the future.
You have a discussion? None has to pay vote. It is approved. Fix this to see if the amendment master, we're in Northwell, we're breaking up the fifteen thousand.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Brian and Dan.
So the reason that we're doing this is so we can get the ideal spots, see the data next well, when we need to dig the next, that well, and then after we're ready, we can carve out that section by that. Possibility, so we can keep the route and be able, uh, to get our.
You have to please vote. Approved. Fix this to be discussion appropriate, follow the regarding, through the right of way.
So I have prepared that memo, um, I just kind of want to give your guys its feelings on moving forward with this, uh, there's a lot of. Can we, can we not do this? I sent a couple pictures of, uh, to let me take today on Penn Street. That is, uh, roots in that cemetery sewer that we're going to have to clear out to get our camera through that. Really surprised that we haven't had any issues with that, or tree right there, we're just expecting that. Yes, I just need to know the clear direction, Ryan and I actually need to know the clear direction, which way you guys want to proceed. Um, it used to be that Sudas said, I am in the right way, now Sudas went back and says. With all the infrastructure and everything going into the right of way, you're considered, you should put consideration on not planting trees in the right. Put them on, do properly, we don't have this all. Like I said, it's just, if not clear, or it says that the homeowner needs to trim and maintain them. Um, we went from eighth and N to E and eight hours trimming trees. And started coming back at night, another eight hours, made it to Lincoln, to trim all the trees, all out and whatnot, so. It's time to me. Not for us, I mean. It's the job, but we need to get enough, because of our plot trucks, taking the bus, semi that come to the town. This kind of one. Your feelings on this, where we need to go next with it?
The city will also need to purchase a lot of pieces of equipment in order to get this figured out. That's currently not, I want to be, what we can do last week. Uh, did you say, well, thirty, thirty-five hundred dollars by novel, to put on a jet shop to try to remove this, get it out of there?
Was this tree in the right of way? Uh, the one that we suspected roots to come from, yes. Is this sewer in the right of way or is it in the middle of the street right over? On chest three, straight south, one thing went, one towards Ken. So we're, we're trying to camera that, because we had a homeowner call and. Road to River came out, of course, they're then a hundred and eight, hundred and fifty feet, so all the lumber go, so it's always the city's fault. Now with this camera, we can go out, we can find their cat, look in and see how you swap roads here.
And I'll say personally. I, I get a little bit of heartburn about it, and I understand that we need to be good stewards of our resource bills and we don't want to destroy and construct it, and we're trying to catch up and improve. Um, as we go, I also know that there are communities like Lennox that have had tornadoes take out all their trees and the right of way is just barren. So for me, I'd like to see if there's a balance where we can still have a nice tree canopy, will still protect our, our infrastructure, so. I don't know, a lot of homes, I don't know if they have enough behind the right of way to have trees, or if there are certain trees that have less. Of a root spread that may be smaller, but still provides and then they.
There is a tree loss. And two authors, a list of trees that, that you can plant. Um, you just can't go out and call this one, it's not on the list, they. And Sudas is, uh. They urban design and. State.
Those are the trees that Jamie Hewitt plants.
Yes, they were. Well, you know, we're having a couple of trees, I don't know the name for them.
No, they, they're not. It is, it is a, we require them to turn the tree.
So could we not build that? So we had to do it, you know?
We could, we could build them, we do not build them.
Now, I think that we're not communicating kind of kind well.
And, and before we did trim, we had, had Marloes put it out.
I did see that.
A couple of weeks before, because we do have people that, you know, why do we judge in my tree? Um, we haven't had them yet, that's good, but. We communicated that, you put the ordinance on there where it stays, you know, a homeowner is responsible.
I will say too, I mean, we're trying to, we need to walk along there, walk places, you have to play the boat to get past people's trees because they let them over the highway events.
Well, and file on, it's in my. I would say. There is quite a few intersection that are being driven. Like especially pulling on Lincoln Way, there's someone, you gotta be on the pro, can't see their own trees. You know, to me, that's a concern, that was my concern. Um, you know, I moved to three whole blocks, we bought our new house, but the corner where we were was bad, and then there's a couple of blocks away, there's. We're on Lincoln Way, we want to stick out because I didn't want people driving on. Look, if you guys drive up and down Lincoln Way, you're going to see right exactly what I'm talking about, it's not just my side of town, but others too. That part of my concern is happening in the right of way, I mean, it, it just. I am surprised we don't have more access from that point, but, I mean, it's tough to see, but you got to get out in the road and see if it's on the channel. But, but I'm kind of a breath too, it's not, some of those, but some of those trees, I'm going to, I'm going to pick on Weber's. Corner there on forty-three, beautiful, there's lots of awesome of all those trees and that, but you can't see around, you're on forty-three trend, you know, coming from the south. So. But there's got to be some kind of ground in that.
It'd be nice to where you find regulations, a lot of people to plant some trees and, you know. Perhaps in the correct plantings and correct type of trees, less.
I think a lot of cities are doing that, a lot of cities are doing that with the permit process.
Yeah.
So there's, you're going to do a right away plan, then you try to sort of.
Yeah, they, they don't get over make. Yeah. I mean, it's not like.
Well, maybe that's where we can, take for it to the trimming, I mean, too, the, the part of the trimming is really problematic.
You're planning and you have to trim it, yeah.
I have a feeling, people definitely won't pay, especially if it's for the.
And just another thing, today I had one of you are, uh, code for trees. And I kind of had a, the past seven years, we spent a hundred ninety-two thousand dollar. On, on trees and that probably means that goes too far as everything, that or, um. If you look around now, it's going to be the maple, they're going to be next, I get called every single day about my maple tree, this tree's dead. It just, it, it goes on and on. Um, so that's kind of what I'm wanting is, what can we do if they're not treating their trees? Are we still responsible for taking them down next? You know, nobody wants their trees cut down in the right of way and was dead, and it's your tree. I just like to sit down and have, have a discussion, figure out some, some other ordinance, rules, whatever that we need to do with it, so.
So it's clear, Ryan's been the element of two. How good this person can. We just need to make.
It sounds like you're going to organize.
Well, we're not worried about starting fourth here. Well, I think it needs to be cleared up because we checked into it and if there's infrastructures, then we don't allow it. You know, there's some streets that don't have water, I believe that don't have it. So, I mean, that's kind of where we're at with it. But I think that needs to be spelled out. Why did I trees here and, well, they don't have sewer. Well, I don't have sewer either, well, yeah, you do.
Sounds like probably some sort of controlled permit process instead of getting a review placement, if it's appropriate. Maybe your view or. In fact, I can like, see if we decide we want to.
Thank you.
Let people off. Yeah, it's probably also some sort of stipulation for what happens when people don't keep up their own trees, even the ones that are there now. So that we're not, because with Fandeman, or somebody said they get used to it, goes this way for the city to come and trim their trees.
And that's honestly, that's the way it's been ever since, a third year, five years. This way, you know, Joe and I kind of talked about this, you start building trees, I mean, we're gonna have six guys, five to six guys, a loader, chainsaw, lift, trucks, being near looking, a whole thousand dollars. And then you stop each house to do this. And trimming trees is safer. I don't want, trust me.
Yeah.
None of my guys like heights, this is good to go.
For you guys, give us that one off.
So anyway, I'd be happy to be on a committee or whatever to meet. It just kind of, I've been kind of looking to some other stuff there. I'll allow it. Just clarification would be good for the public.
Do you want a couple council members to take into that out of the committee? Anybody feel found anyone?
Is she there?
Yeah.
Can she, you know, she can't wait for a perfect process and and just like that.
Is there any question? Actually bring it up?
All right. Then Dave, this is to be ordinance number 1047, twenty 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 four. When it's amended to credit ordinances of the city of Nevada, Iowa. Two thousand and six family provisions for being to reduce charges definitely not.
So what you have in front of you is something different than what is in the package. What is in the package is for, the reason we need this, so we can actually move forward with the loan or that we are requesting in order to finish paying the plan. What you have in front of you is what asked you and asked you our wastewater consultant is proposing. And it's nine different account types, so it has your residential, single family, commercial, multifamily. Commercial exempt, which would be like your school, your churches, commercial one, two, three, and industrial one, two, three. We're hoping that with, with these amounts that we have down here in the infrastructure that we won't, won't have to actually move forward with what is in the packet. That we even the packet that has a large increase through your base value. So we're hoping that with this, we will be able to not effectively be creating the base.
Would you want to address? What's in the package, or answer any questions about this?
Yeah, so I believe in the package is, is it fifty? Was three fifty-three dollars, so we'd be increasing the base fee of fifty-three dollars and that would be per account. So every account is residential, commercial, industry. And that will be on every single bill and that is, in, in order for us to give these loans, we have to be able to pay for them through our sewer account. And what that fifty-three dollars increase that allows us to pay for that loan each year when we.
So after the loan, so we decided, I mean, these, we're ready.
Yes.
Where everybody.
Yeah. So. We need to vote approve this, is what you're saying.
We need to vote approve this, so we actually got the law to pay for future, the rest.
Was there a crappy way to say whether. To say that this is really what we're trying to do?
I think the way to explain to the public is that this is for purposes, in order to get that loan. What we're working on is not only in order to reevaluate the most. If you notice on the residential, that we do not in, increase the base value, it's like. And it's the same with your commercial multifamily, commercial ordinance. So we are trying to keep the residential on somewhere that the multiple habits are increased, so not to increase.
I just worry about that. Oh, look, Kathy's.
Play Marlo's sit on Friday and she kind of pulled me right away.
It is, it is frightening, I mean, fifty-three dollars is a lot of money, right? It's not, it's right.
What I explained to Marlo's was my understanding of the intended stewardess confirmed is that we would reevaluate that ordinance once the wastewater study is complete, we don't want it actually need to be going forward.
Well, I'm with you through the ordinance 1047. Right.
Brian and Jason, furthering the session. And none has a free vote.
My question is, can they keep down it?
Yeah, you provide the updates on a regular basis, so all, all of a sudden, some goes out. But the rest will meet that way, you guys will have to mark later, like before that, I don't know what to do with that. But we see you updating names on a regular basis. I still have two emails that I need to respond to one today. And I responded to a couple of other things, like some of the street. He is updating, working with the industry. We met with Michael two Fridays ago and kind of went over everything. That way they would submit every renewed categorical, second to the V and one. And figure out where they fall in line with what these accounts fall. Matt will work as well, but he met with Gavio the night before, so Tuesday before that Friday. Gavio has already seen a lot of their information.
The last item was approved, so we're done with that, we can make the perfect call on here, place with the hard at plan. Brenda come forward and tell us what you got.
When you pass in front, we did update on the flood. Okay, you know, I have heard you, you're up about, you not have a chance to drive by the construction site? So, yeah, just constructing a beautiful new building. We can wait at airport road in the back corner, so there's a bunch of dirt there. And it's gonna be a neat building, all the stairs hanging on the ground. Glad to watch that investment here in the community. The other project I directed to is the, it's based, was well underway on our expansion project as well. Both of those have a lot of dirt moving, dirt moving, and it's exciting to see that. Probably what we've been talking about for a while, good to see that happening. The other thing I was going to alert you to is we're going to be approaching the story county and asking for some assistance to provide infrastructure, get some new blocks in the community. So we got a little street where we got a sewer line and seeing, so. And ADC is purchasing a couple of lots along that road and we have some plans to develop some other lots as well. Before all the art of funding from the county is distributed, we're gonna go and make a request there. So we'll keep it posted through that process and, you know, again, the overall goals. For the real reason I'm here united to talk a little bit about the creative catalyst project grant opportunity. So this will talk a little bit about the funding that's made available over the Iowa Arts Council and the Iowa Economic Authority. We're suggesting, what I'm proposing, I haven't started the grant yet on your behalf, would be is that you would request four thousand dollars, the required match for the head is two thousand. And I've got to get this turned around on your behalf by November first. So that's why the amended, amended agenda here at the eleven hour. What we're proposing is we would directly spend to launch the Nevada Public Arts Commission. We've already approved the formation of five ordinance. And what we do is utilize these dollars to really create a program, like a micro grant program that we would give them a dollar for every two dollars they raise for the resource. Hopefully to get a few public arts projects in front of the public arts commission to give them some beginning to initiate their work. So long term, I envision that we can continue to fund the program with the assistance of the Nevada foundation, if you're scheduled to come to our annual meeting in November, you'll hear about helping the helping the ads campaign.
We'll finalize it.
Okay, well, we're helping the ads campaign. So, so from the state of Louisiana, I'm pointing, if I were here, I would certainly ask if we look at that, like a fundraising campaign. The efforts meant if you so desire, allocate funds for public garden, you can do that as well. So just seems that we can try to take advantage of this, it's not a large amount of money. People might be aligned with the new groups. Any questions for me? We have an expert on this. Somebody brought it to my attention, I saw, I'm very grateful.
What sort of projects do you envision this to be used for?
So I think that really needs to be up to the minimum that you all have formed. So getting a direction that both of you, whether it's mural projects, theme or apple. Little bear cubs that need to be decked out with something more. Or when we were in Lafayette, I'm sure Jordan and they're, we'll talk about this. So they produce campus had kind of this reoccurring theme of like astronaut footsteps in front of things. And it was just kind of a cool art element in various phases that was brought through the campus. And so I, I hate to determine too much of that really because that's what we want to form. Be nice to have a little bit of money in the checkbook, but yet also say to folks, maybe, I mean, art projects always need money. They don't need a way, let me please find, sure gonna need about, right, if I did my business practice.
Brenda, I would just add, it's not only like visual art, you know, anything that promotes exhibitional art, making, there are activities, promoting collaborations around art. You know, we have kind of started an award, it's not a brand, it's a stage we're working on. So we probably need to, you know, we have some work already done, it needs to be really used sometimes in the day. I feel some of the things that, and then commissions as well, so they like.
You need some more applicants, so I'm gonna bring that up. We need the applicant for art and also surf preservation. So we have good goals for both of those groups. So think about your networks and who maybe will convince to apply for them. There's my quote.
It also becomes definite, you know, people.
Yeah.
Come, they travel, they do, they become, so maybe someday. Yeah, and I think we're very excited about, and I think we all are, feeling about the great year on the fire department. So it is, but again, I think looking at this is really kind of a good grant opportunity to almost give something that that new group can come around and try to promote. But I have, the mayor with this system that we have to do, I'll be glad, art talk is not normally my thing, but I think I can get this to him on your cap, so. He needs to take that to the level.
Dr. Red Heart, my Brian. This is a, named Brenda from, who was down at that one last week and got Karen, you know, this, this. And you know that this, you have to vote. That pretty, takes us to report for the city of Memphis here.
All right, so last week Brett, Brenda and I were in West Lafayette, Lafayette, Indiana, and had a really good time. The one takeaway that I, I guess I had, and all Brett speak more on it, was the collaboration between both communities and county. Every product that they're doing, all three entities were involved and it was just great to see. And like, like Brenda said, the cool thing about Purdue University is they did have a lot of staff everywhere along the campus. They're handy, starts with a small step, yeah. And it was also fun to see some of their coworking spaces, you know. Fun to say that we had one of our own with copper spaces, that was really fun to see. But some other things I was, I wanted to talk to you about nineteen things, South and D. They did take down those temporary four-way stops and I probably had a discussion about making those permanent. Start tracking that, but I just wanted to give her guidance and direction to see if that's still something that we wanted to follow up on and to do.
I had several people reach out to me and said they liked the time being there, that they were a little more visible, you know, what to do. It was good to look.
I'm not being a, I'm here. There's not been an issue that has resulted more like neighbors reaching out and be about the city business. So I created that by name, but like, very much like having. I would say we probably need to buy this supply. You know, I know Joe, we can talk months ago about opting for, since we're taking down the overhead bikes and the units, like about something a little more economical than the high dollar.
Have, have you noticed the intersection?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The top lights are off.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I remember that.
Yeah.
So I was gonna ask if we can take those down, please.
And, and Joe has been looking at different flashes to put up there, a lot more economic cost than what the actual flashing scenes are. With flat scenes, they go up almost double than what we originally paid. We're not, not double, but almost they're around three thousand dollars before they're up and it costs us probably eighteen hundred dollars. I'm much in plan on figuring out how we can really see what happens around that area, it'll get expensive if they got knocked down, we're having to replace. Once they're knocked down, they break and we have to replace.
And somebody was going there early in the morning, I'm, I'm agreeing with Brian, we definitely need less. We're, we're going to work out like five thirty, you can relax. A lot of people that.
Part of it.
They were waiting.
From the stop sign, going northbound. All the way up to, they're like, make eye contact with the other drivers and the folks from the reverse outbound saying that. So she actually finally got to the intersection.
Well, people aren't used to it.
There weren't any lights, people either, speaking, you know, standing where to stop. And I think there's a few other intersections we need to light, I think, there was a lot of, already. Once we get into economic, it would be nice to light them up.
The fact that someone leaves to the hospital. I mean, you just let it go home.
People are gonna get. And then they drive the darn back.
But I was actually going to bring up the speed limit also, you saw Misty, thank you for coming in, I also noticed quite a bit of uh. Speeders on that road as well, uh so I was actually going to bring that up, so thank you for the guidance and. Uh one of the things that you have in front of you, I sent you an email, I want to see it was about two weeks ago regarding. Uh Maple Avenue in front of the road on the north side of Highway thirty. The first thing to figure out is the granular shoulders versus the combination of patent granular shoulders, I have been speaking with. County and we both have. Agreed that it's probably safest and better to have a baby and granular shoulders, that about need of. Clearance for for drivers. So I I was wanting to talk to you, you all about that and we will have an agreement that will be on the next council meeting for. Just wanted to get your input on what your thoughts were and. Figure out if that's the route we wanna go or if we wanted to just do the granulars.
Do we anticipate bike traffic on that road? Is this, I'm gonna say, didn't we have a a walking, maybe walking that or bike path or something? So integrated into that and across the bridge and. And go along into Sixth Street and everything.
So this is on Maple Avenue, not not. You are correct, though, you have a. I knew this.
I think I probably would too, if you were heading toward the age already, take that way. But I think you'd all. That road would be pretty. And from looking at the cost, it's really.
Yeah, so I remember the Indian Basin, a hundred seventeen thousand.
And I think what Maple makes. A lot of things because of the small amount. Cause the DOD is gonna pay for the maple part. The expensive part is what they, that's totally up at that um.
Which we will use, we will be able to use station transportation dollars for that and that's how we're actually funding the uh. The path across the flyover as well, we're going to be utilizing that. Larry's not here to confirm, but I believe at that time we will have around two million dollars or close to on order to pay for both of these projects. That way it's. Yeah, I think I will have that on next conference agenda. We had our city school meeting last week or two weeks ago, now very well, I think everything is moving forward, we also met about the. Project at the elementary school and discussed some concerns and. And really is, uh we really need to just communicate and figure out a good path on what construct, when to construct it. That way we're not competing on the school track. I do not believe we will be able to finish the whole entire project during the summer, I think it will lead into the beginning of the year and. The school doesn't know that, we just need to figure out. How to communicate with that and what we're planning on doing is setting two meetings. Probably after the first of the year. Uh with parents, that way we can inform them, communicate and continue to communicate. That path, so we don't have. Participated in many tours up the field house, I think what we had, what, four in one week? Two weeks ago, um so. That's the most I've been in the building at one time, but it was really exciting to see the improvements. On the on the days that we were there. Seem to have improvements every single time we were there, so that was. All really great.
Any feedback on the floor, how's it doing?
Four.
Of the floor, yeah, sure, um I think Don was gonna take those readings last week, I did not see him today, so I don't.
We didn't anticipate, they're probably pretty close or if not.
They're they're getting there, but I think the hope is they'll be turn on. Yeah, but I think like. Yeah, I should have an update tomorrow and I guess.
I submitted that in case, so fifty-five hundred for to discover aims, gives ideas of it here and that is specifically for marketing. Last year we did receive the award for three thousand, I outdid a little bit because I. I just felt we could utilize that a little bit better and reach out different groups for that, I think one of the. The groups that we missed out on was Spotify or Apple Music, Spotify tends to get very expensive, so. That was one of the reasons why we didn't, but I think if we do get this, that is the route that we'll wanna take, that way we can make some. Exposure to view. Because uh with talking with Emily today, she said that she'd heard a lot of people say that they they didn't outside of the data, they have no idea the. I wanna be able to provide that to the people outside of the data area, because we we do get a lot of support from. From our community members and we wanna be able to showcase our our community, I think that's one way we can do that. Also had a regular interview with the auditor and I I felt that went very well, we. We really had a good year, we didn't have too many issues. Couple that I can think of, uh and we can easily address those. But uh it went very well. Today we had our insurance meeting that went over the increase, which is uh two point three five percent with. Uh something that we did stuff in the past. Uh we just informed everybody at that meeting and all of the city employees. And we also are on on uh really doing a completely different. Uh before we offered Aflac, we're not going to be offering that, it's still available if you if you are. Enrolled in it, but uh. We we came back with uh Reliance, which had a lot better benefit for for us. And then Thursday I start a leadership class at six classes. Six classes for four hours, the Peds in the one month, so I'll be doing that once a month for the next six months. We're all wearing aims with uh Remire. LLC. That grew out. Really excited about that, we had a lot of different. Groups of people in there, diverse groups of people, and so I. Excited to start that and. You know.
Even if you're Jordan. Hold on. Hey, I won't belabor too much of what Jordan went over, we did have the city school meeting as well, that's probably. Set face with them and a lot of talk about um. The state throughout the school type discussion, making sure we're continuing to make improvements around school neighborhood. Wanted to echo the audit and congratulate Karen and staff, um we always have a good audit, but I think it's probably the best one we've had so far, they did. Really good job at continuing to improve those. And then the yeah, the intercity trip out to Indiana, uh I think one of the biggest take backs I was bringing back is the ability to spend time networking with the leaders in art. Yeah, because we actually get to spend time brainstorming about how. How we can work together, but yeah, I think the 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 common theme out there is all of the local area and how much they work together. And I think we've obviously made a large stride in the regional outlook. But they even take it to another level where they're helping each other with development agreements and things like that, which is kind of. Wrong on how do they achieve that, combined two areas and all sorts of interesting. Things, but yeah, the the and we were. Obviously it said things like everything's been running in the same direction, but I learned a new phrase too, they're all pulling on the same end of the rope. You can change it up, have a new thing now about working together. Don't have too much else to add, other than we did get to see reduced traffic and feel that it'll be a better track and it'll kind of last a mile. Any questions for me? I think council reports.
I just wanna say that so we say on Friday, we are hosting a large readership exchange here in Nevada, and Nevada was selected by a different power role out of working in here. These are both, it's a day long opportunity for changes that have reduced in leadership programs like the data, they come to learn, test packages, the network. Collaborate and do things. And then Friday morning is a training, have a very specific skill building training for those people. As well as that afternoon, we have a boot camp for communities and for county leaders, building our neighbors. Are bringing team in for the boot camp to get started. All the kinds of things, so help everything that you guys talked about that's gone. That would be a big time, I think over I think hundred and twenty or so folks will be in. Together. And they have a little certificate that's done on the in the data that evening for attendance.
Southern council reporter. Please go back to that. We kind of went over most of the stuff that I wanna talk about, uh I just wanted to make sure that we had no complaints with the overhead lights before we do take them down. Uh the only ones that are still up are Sixth Street and I. You're gonna be able to put in time for that. Move that move that stuff around. But they'll still be up, we will try to get that up. We talked about trees in the right away. We're starting to tree. Tree tree. Just to just to kind of give you some numbers. We've used our tour inspection camera about seventy-four hours, so. They hold, Mike Adman have taken the thing over and it's great, um. With that being said, our last bill was four hundred and forty dollars per hour. So we're looking at thirty-two thousand dollars. That we've been up doing. See, yeah, but just to see what this this camera will. Do for us, we found a lot of cool stuff, um we found snakes, we found. Yeah.
Is that how you found the record?
Uh no. Doug found that. Um how you didn't find my neighbor's mirror? Did you ever scan? Cause they're all in my. My comment and wouldn't. But it it's it's a great tool, uh we've done all of the avenues to look at the infrastructure, so we can save money by by just overlaying that, um cause. Depending on the water. So yeah, I just kind of wondered if you guys know where we're at with that. So yeah, the record.
Actually, was able to watch a little bit.
If if you guys see the red pickup and white trailer out. It it kind of it. It looks like a cluster and but stop and talk to the guys, I mean. They're just, they're more happy to show everybody how to do it, it's a it's a program, I think it's printed off some of the stuff that we go through. Uh we're driving along, we can look up. There's a rip wall, maybe you can put it in there and then automatically prints it out on our. And that's something that we can have. We've done land drive. Where it was our sewer, that was the problem. While we climbed up there, looked up in their cap and they had roots in there, so. It it's a great tool. Like I said, if you see them out about stuff, then they'll be more happy to. Do the role of it. Jason like it does. A robot. That's pretty cool, it is, it seems. Any other questions?
Well. Well, trainees the last couple of weeks and on the House Files seven. One of the things, um one of the thinkers said. Which made me feel a little better was um. It really produces more questions than answers, so not, I'm confused. It's all right, because they are too, so I guess. Uh one thing we did find out was. A little bit more on mailing that story county will do. So before we did the maximum property tax levy. And now we don't have to do that, but we have to give our levy numbers to the county. Who will then turn around and mail every property address. What our levy and all the other levies, the other entities have to do it too. Um what that levy will do, for example, of a hundred thousand dollar. So that they're aware of what the levy might look like and how we'll impact them. And then after that mailing is when we. Uh have a public hearing, that's the one that has to be a standalone public hearing. Uh myself, Zomi, and then I think that was the one I told you we're gonna do like. And then certain demons for regular. And then um. Have that hearing and then that night at the regular, I'm believing in some public hearing for the actual. So the timeline of that, at least we kind of got down and figured out what we could do and when. So I'll have the timeline in the next. You can see what we're uh I know I'm doing. We also have a. Budget workshop on November sixteen. And this year they put it up into the generator and advanced and they're actually, if you go to one, you get a free webinar to the other ones, so. It was kind of a good deal. Creating. Uh we're working on the end of the year reports in the next couple of weeks, so um mostly by the next eight months for you and. But the work things are. We're in the. And the mayor and Gordon reported on the other stuff about the audit and.
Did I understand correctly that the mayor of the county will do this more in their. Dollar amount?
Mailing, yes.
So basically it's like what we are.
Thousand dollar, it's not yours personally, it's. This is what I would do a hundred thousand.
Basically, it's we are. Material and work up. We have already.
Yes, boys.
Cause I was curious how the county is gonna turn that around for every individual.
A thousand dollar worth back.
Marla, say anything to me on it.
Um. I'm working on the community guide. We're gonna have a new community guide. And that's been my biggest project lately. Top four different things here, the thing is not another level. And I learned some things just listening. And well, for everybody here, we want to be all that house. He's starting to work.
The door really.
Oh my god. Yeah, we lived through the whole thing, what it looked like, and I think at some point you're gonna let me go over and talk to you again. Cause I think it'd be really cool, it's really looking to me. Uh looked at it most. Those are my things for tonight.
Just share with you that uh the cold weather that we have uh coming in this weekend, we're gonna start shut off all the water outlets in parks and cemeteries, so. Uh talk to Marla earlier today and she's gonna be there that on social media as well. Um we do have an opening in our department, it's based in the area of this uh left of the city for an opportunity. Be in private centers, so we see and wish you well. And that will be working through to post the victims bill and. We'll be forward here over the next couple of weeks, so. And just the last thing I wanna say, I want to give Ron and Sarah. Thanks again for all the work, taking in gathering information, sorting through all this information. Uh putting it together, um I don't know how many times they. After that, they agreed it in the office, so. Uh they did have a, you know, documents they could share with you with the park board. And with the community, so they did a lot of work on that and. Want to thank the park board for all their support through this whole process as well as the county council, so. Um we're excited to uh get it open and hopefully these next few weeks are gonna be pretty busy out there and. We're we're seeing light at the end of the tunnel, it's coming. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have. Oh, thanks, seeing Thanksgiving last year in November twenty-one. And that'd be at the church, so. Uh if anybody is interested in assisting with that, um it'll be at the memorial. Thank you.
Actually, kind of at the office last week with uh finishing. But uh asked great and yeah, I was just not much for me. As you guys know, there's this concern about the stop sign of the nation. Whether that's being followed. The G, so we did a GTSB project Friday the twentieth. Uh it was from forty-five to forty-five, the full four hours and there were twenty-four traffic stops. Uh with that, we have fourteen citations.
Uh, with that, we had fourteen citations, seventeen more, the majority of them were stop signs, B and C bulbs. Uh, as you guys know, from eleven to fifteen, there's one top, the highest speed report is to calm down, so, um, as we get more concerned, uh, we'll be, uh, discussing more TGSB projects and, uh, uh, sure that it makes. For the hiring, continuing to connect in, in the running, uh, by this time next week, we can have a good idea what we're moving forward with. And, uh, we'll, once again, just invite them to get out. Anyway, thank you.
I would much, uh, go ahead, and, uh, just want to begin offering questions, and, yeah, welcome, Marla and Tony.
I know it is on the engineering side, I wasn't good at any questions tonight.
You did too.
I'm wanting to go over your journey, who's your journey? Anything to follow in favor? Bye, bye, and so. Yeah, the mayor.